I'll call the August 24, 2020 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. I'll first read the remote announcement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings of the Town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation in the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. And unfortunately, my subcommittee chairman isn't here. So the first thing we have, we have a plan not requiring subdivision approval. 275 Main Street, A&R applicant and owner Taft House Realty Trust, Josephine El Viglia trustee of two lots. I don't have the paperwork on it. That's why I was hoping Jeff would be here because Mary gave it to me. Now I gotta go find it. Hold on. You give me the form, Mary?
I certainly should have, yes. I believe that Christine is the clerk.
Okay, I'm getting it now. Hold on. I gotta use another computer. I wasn't gonna print everything out. I can only get eight and a half by 11. I wouldn't see it anyway, so. Okay, you gave me the A&R on it. The plan itself, but I don't see the form though.
The application?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, just read it into the record.
So we have an application, Form A, A&R dated August 17, 2020. The applicant and owner are Taft House Realty Trust, Josephine Viglia trustee. Surveyor is Topper Land Survey, Inc. Property information is assessors map 33C parcel D07. It's in the Village Business zoning district. And it is to subdivide 275 Main Street into 275 Main and 275 Rear. So number proposed lots are two.
Okay. Okay, everyone has the plan in front of them. It looks like, it looks like they're placing in. Are there exist a 25-foot wide access easement? To service the back rear lot. Both houses were done way before subdivision control law. I assume right now both, it's one single lot with two, with two houses on it. The concern I have is the fact that even though there's an, they're showing an access, who's going to maintain the access? Who's going to control the access? You're gonna have two different parties using the access. Mary, Mary and I are in the opinion that maybe a special, a note on the plan would be nice to say a common driveway, special permit will be required or something to that effect. So that we can assure that the access is usable by both parties, the front house and the rear house.
Can we do that within the purview of an 81P plan? Require a special permit?
We can't do anything. We can't even condition an A&R.
Right.
I'm just concerned about access. That's my concern, okay? When I saw this plan, that's the first thing that stuck out at me. Well, it was under one owner controlling both lots, both houses. Okay, one owner is in charge of supplying the access to both houses. Now that it's being subdivided, you're gonna have a different owner for the rear point. What's gonna protect his rights for access?
Hopefully his attorney. His or her attorney.
Can we have the applicant address the easement and access to the rear lot?
Well, an easement giving a right of way, sorry. Easement giving a right of way basically is the protection that you are discussing. So the person in the rear has the right to pass and repass over the access easement.
So per our zoning bylaw, you can have a common driveway to serve more than one lot? Or a common driveway is required to be able to serve more than one lot? Not just a, not just a recorded easement? I mean, it would have to be recorded?
The provision that you're talking about concerning common driveways under the special permit regulations that are under the subdivision rules. This is truly an A&R plan that does not require approval.
Correct.
Common driveway special permit section is pertaining to plans that do require subdivision approval.
Right, we have a separate zoning bylaw for common driveways. So typically-
When, when it's when an access crosses somebody else's lot. Okay, so Lot 1R. They don't have a problem because they have the driveway right in their lot. But Lot 2R in the back there, other than those words that say 25-foot access easement.
With that stuff, I need to hear.
I, I, I'm just, I don't know. I can, I can go, I can, I can acknowledge what Greg said about need a good attorney and make sure before the person that buys 2R, make sure that they straighten out the easement. Because the owner of Lot 1R could, you know, use the, I don't know what condition it's in right now. Don't care really about it. Maybe 2R will care what condition that easement is.
I believe the, I believe they're submitting under, I think it's called 81L, where you have two buildings, two houses on one lot. I don't think you're, I don't think you're really allowed to add restrictions to that. I mean, think of it as a subdivision that you, subdivision approved is approved by the planning board. And somebody buys a lot and the subdivision, the owner doesn't, doesn't grant them access over the road. Right? Kind of similar to that, but not really. It's really, it's, it's an 81L and I'm not sure that we can add any stipulations or require a common drive or anything like that.
No, but we would hope that per our zoning bylaw that they would eventually come back and apply for special permit for a common driveway.
It looks like, isn't there already a driveway there?
Yeah.
So it seems like they're just creating an easement around the existing common driveway.
The existing driveway, yeah.
Driveway. Existing driveway.
Yep. It was basically common because same person owned Lot 1R and 2R.
Right.
Right.
But upon the subdivision, it's creating two separate lots. So that access easement needs to be recorded with the registry of deeds. I feel as a common driveway.
Could I comment?
Sure.
The chapters and laws and the definitions, page 2, and the very definition of subdivision. If it's a division of land where two buildings existed prior zoning, it shall not constitute a subdivision. So if it's not a subdivision, the plan's entitled to be approved under the A&R regulation. And yes.
Understood.
Okay, well, that's what we got in front of us. Entertained a motion from the board.
Will you break this up, Josephine? Are you gonna have like a, an agreement for the maintenance of the driveway? That's usually the issue we have when we have these common driveways. Is that we wanna make sure there's some kind of agreement between both parties where they will take care of the maintenance of the lot.
When you require someone to oversee someone else's property?
You're breaking up. I couldn't hear.
Yeah, we can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry. Hang on. Is this better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. So the law provides that when somebody will write away over somebody else's land, the person in the rear has the right to pass and repass. And there is a law about maintenance requirements. It also includes the right to maintain utilities over a standard right of way.
Okay. All right. I mean, as long as there's, if you're saying that to the law, as again, I'm not an attorney, as long as it's not gonna be an issue with people maintaining their driveway, you know, like you say, it's an A&R lot with an easement. Way I look at it.
Make a motion, Norman?
I make a motion that we grant this A&R claim for 275 Main Street as submitted to the planning board on August 14, 2020. And I'm just gonna put, well, I can't put a condition on it, so.
No, you can't put a condition.
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I wanna, I wanna make sure that you know that we're doing this because this property was developed before we had the zoning regulations that we have in place.
And that note is put on the plan already.
Okay.
They did put that on there. It's, uh, it's number two, two shows. It was done before the Town of Oxford.
They got a subdivision control law. That's my net, that's my motion, Rich.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, Dale seconded. Further discussion? There being none, I'll vote yes.
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 Christine?
Yes.
Voted unanimously. Hey, Garry's, good luck.
Thank you very much.
They're with me because I didn't receive a package today. So I gotta go get the one that has the announcement of the next upcoming public hearing. Okay, the time being 7:05, we have a public hearing for how, Lot 7 on Howard Street, which is gonna be known as 54 Howard Street. Applications for stormwater management, land disturbance permits, applicant owner DJ Enterprises Incorporated for construction of a single-family dwelling, on-site septic and associated site work, including a subsurface drain trench, roof trench drain, roof drain trench and a grassed swale. I'll first read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 66 and 67 of the Oxford general bylaws, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom application on Monday, August 24, 2020 at 7:05 PM in the town, for the, within town hall on a stormwater management and land disturbance permit application submitted by the applicant DJ Enterprises Incorporated for the construction of a single-family home, driveway, septic system and associated drainage and site grading for property owned by the applicant located on Howard Street Lot 7, Oxford, Mass. Assessors map 50D parcel A01.07, to be known as 54 Howard Street. The application of plan and supporting documents may be reviewed in the office of the town clerk or the planning department. Anyone designed to be heard for this, for this plan should be in this call or any written correspondence submitted to them, to the, to the board. And I think the only correspondence I was aware of was the Graves memo. Right, Mary?
That is the only correspondence, yes.
Could you read it in, Mary? Because I, I don't know, that's in a different email. I'll have to go find it.
Sure. So we sent this project out to Graves Engineering for third-party review. And we received a response letter or review letter from them dated August 13, 2020. Dear Planning Board members, we receive the following documents on July 31, 2020. Correspondence from Summit Engineering and Survey, Inc. to Town of Oxford Planning Board dated July 22, 2020. Ray's Stormwater Management Land Disturbance Permit Application, Lot 7, Harwood Street, Oxford, Mass. With attachments. Plans entitled Sewage Disposal System for Lot 738, Harwood Street. Assessors map 50D parcel A01, Oxford, Mass. Dated July 7, 2020, prepared by Summit Engineering and Survey, Inc. for DJ Enterprises, Inc., one sheet. Found document entitled Drainage Analysis, Lot 7, Harwood Street, Oxford, Mass. Dated July 10, 2020, prepared by Summit Engineering and Survey, Inc. for DJ Enterprises, Inc. Graves Engineering has been requested to review and comment on the plans and supporting documents in accordance with the Mass DEP Stormwater Handbook, Town of Oxford, Chapter 66, Section 7, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance. Town of Oxford, Chapter 67, Section 7, Stormwater Management Plan. And Chapter 8, Operation and Maintenance Plan and Standard Engineering Practices. GEI was authorized to proceed with this review on July 27, 2020. Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance, Chapter 66. One, we have no issues relative to compliance with Town of Oxford, Chapter 66 requirements, except as noted below. Two, the plan needs to contain the telephone number and the address of the owner applicant. Three, the plans need to include a North Arrow and the names of the butters. Four, the plans need to include erosion control measures around the temporary material stockpile. At a minimum, an erosion control barrier needs to encompass the down gradient area of the stockpile. Stormwater Management, Town of Oxford, Chapter 67. Five, we have no issues relative to compliance with Town of Oxford, Chapter 67 requirements, except as noted below. For the benefit of the contractor, a construction detail should be provided on the plan for the stone infiltration trench. Hydrology comps and Mass DEP Stormwater Management. GEI reviewed the hydrology computations and found them to be in order. GEI has no issues relative to compliance with the Mass DEP Stormwater Standards. General engineering comments, GEI has no issues. General comments, for the record, the street address in the title block should be revised from 38 to the lot's new address, which GEI understands to be 54. We trust this letter addresses your review comments, requirements. Feel free to contact us off if you have any questions or comments. Very truly yours, Jeffrey Walsh, Graves Engineering. And Summit Engineering was copied on that letter.
Hey, is there anyone here, is the applicant, the proponent on this project online?
Nick Conduct is here from Summit.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, we received the comments from Graves Engineering a couple of weeks ago. We are currently working on their revisions, but we haven't submitted their revised plans yet. The only issue we had with the comments was requiring the applicant's phone number to be listed on the plan. I don't know if there's any way we can just, we can leave that out because usually the owner and applicant change, you know, after the house is closed on. We don't usually put the numbers on our plans either, so. Other than that, we have no issues with any of the other comments. We'll make those as soon as possible.
Is that, isn't the phone, is the phone number a requirement of the town?
Apparently it is.
Yeah, it sounds that way under Chapter 66.
Right, so what's the big deal just throwing the current owner on there and further regulations?
I would do that, Nick. I would, I would put in the absolute, the, the, the owner right now and his address and phone number.
Okay, we can, we can put DJ Enterprises' number on the plan. I'm sure he's fine with that.
Okay. In the meantime, maybe we'll, we'll have to relook at it to see why we require that. If these, I agree with you, plans change. People are people, but. We just, we just gotta go by our own rules and regulations, our own bylaws, so.
Yep, I understand.
So Nick, what do you wanna do?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is Andy Bond from Summit Engineering. With regard to that phone number, it may be a requirement of your, of your application. But in the day where people are taking people's personal information and distributing all over the place, the phone number is in the application itself. We really don't see the need to have to have it repeated again on the plan itself. When the project is under construction, you're gonna have contractor information. There's gonna be signs located on the site. I will put it on the plan for the purpose of, of, of compliance to get our, the applicant's permit. But I'd like the board to consider some of these requirements that are being embellished into your bylaws.
You know, there's, there is a, a review going on of stormwater management. So it will affect Chapter 66. And at that time, we'll pursue to get that removed.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe it should just say, at the time a permit is issued to something, you know, you should have a phone number and address, that's who's doing the work. You know, because I'm sure that's the only reason it's really needed.
Right, I mean, I would think the key purpose is whoever's the drain layer on the project would be of, the drain layer and the owner would be the most important. And those are on your building permits and your, your other documentation that's housed within the town hall.
I don't know, I can only say you're the only one out of, what, 10 years? At least 10 years of stormwater management that has ever objected to that particular issue.
Just trying to streamline the process, Mr. Chairman.
I hear, I hear you trying to, trying to tell us that it may not be applicable data after a while. I agree with you there, but.
Right.
We, we got, we get, right now, we gotta meet our bylaws and we will get them changed down the road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So Nick?
Yes.
You want us to continue this so you can supply us with a modified plan, drawings?
We, I mean, we can have the revisions in by the end of the week. If that's acceptable to board.
Well, the other thing we can do is we can condition the the permits to, to, to make sure you add that in at the time the permit is issued.
Yeah, we've done this before. It's, none of these are major.
No, they're, they're very minor.
We approve this with the condition that all the corrections are made. And if they're not made, no building permit will be issued until we've, and we're covered. We're with the project and everybody's happy. So I would make that in the form of a motion that we approve this plan as submitted.
We gotta, we gotta close the public hearing. That's, that's the key. Nick, if that's okay with you to have this thing conditioned and you go ahead and revise your plan, including putting in a detail on the stone infiltration trench. Okay, totally up to you.
That's fine with me.
We work on, go back to Graves with it because we know, we know what they're looking for and we'll make sure it's on the plan.
Yep, that sounds like a plan to me.
I make, we close the public hearing, Rich.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Greg, further discussion? There being, let's vote, I vote yes. Craig?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
And Dale?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay, Norman?
I make a motion that we approve this plan that we received on August 13, 2020. Would be conditioned that all of the recommendations that we received from Graves Engineering, from the memo they sent to us on July 31, 2020, are put on the plan as noted. And that once that is done, then they will be issued a building permit.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second by Dale?
Yep.
Further discussion? There being none, I'll vote yes. Greg?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck. Okay. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of July 27, 2020.
I'll make that a motion.
Christine made the motion. Is there a second? As long as you were there, you could second it.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Greg, okay. Further discussion?
You were there.
Any issues?
I wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
Well, wait till we get there. Entertained a motion to, well, we got the motion. I vote yes. Greg?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Norman?
Abstain.
And Dale?
Abstain.
Carrie? Okay, entertained a motion to approve the minutes of August 10, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Greg made the motion. Is there a second?
Norman, you have to, because I was not there and neither was Dale.
I'll second it.
Further discussion, any issues with it? There being none, I vote yes. Greg?
Aye.
Christine?
Abstain.
Norman?
Yeah.
And Dale?
Abstain.
Carrie? Okay, next we have a Excuse me? I heard something, I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, we got a submission now. And let me get to that.
Christine, can we make arrangements to have you come in and sign the A N R?
Sure.
And I've got a couple of decisions that need signature.
Sure, yeah.
At your earliest convenience, please.
Okay, I'll just give you a call before I come.
Thank you.
I'm still, I'm still working from home, so.
The only thing I can't, I can't find is the, the top paper of the
Application?
Submission on the Hope Ave submission.
The Form C?
Yeah. I got everything else.
Okay, so Form C. Application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan dated eight eleven twenty. The applicant is Lawrence S. Crowley. Engineer or surveyor is Summit Engineering and Survey Inc. Property owner is also Lawrence Crowley. Property information is assessors map forty six. Parcel B zero three zoning district, district R two suburban. So the plan is of land off of Hope Avenue, number of lots proposed is four lots. There's also a Form D designer's certificate to the Oxford Planning Board. We hereby certify the definitive subdivision plan entitled Hope Avenue. And the supporting documentation are true and correct to the accuracy required by the current rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Oxford, Mass. and required by the rules of the Massachusetts Registry of Deeds. And my sources of information about the location of boundaries on said plan were one or more of the following. Deeds from Lawrence S. Crowley Construction Co. Inc. to Lawrence S. Crowley dated four nine two thousand and nine and recorded with the Registry of Deeds and Book four four zero six three. Page one fifty three. Other deeds and plans as follows. Deed book five nine three six, page three sixty seven dated May fourteenth nineteen seventy six. Oral information provided furnished by Lawrence S. Crowley. Actual measurements on the ground from a starting point established by Topper Survey and that is signed by James Patrick Smith, Registered Land Surveyor, and Andrew Baum, Registered Professional Engineer. And then, of course, there is the definitive subdivision plan entitled definitive subdivision plan in Oxford, Mass. Prepared for Lawrence Crowley and dated August tenth, two thousand and twenty. That's what we've got for a submission.
Okay, and it looked like everything was good on it as far as
Yep.
All forms filled out.
All the forms are filled out.
Is there anyone on, online here that's interested in this plan? I see.
Yeah, I'm not sure who we've got with us. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, this is
Okay.
Who is it?
Mr. Chairman, this is Andy Baum from Summit Engineering, unless the board has any questions with the submission. I'm, I am all set for now.
Okay, I'll give you my two cents worth, Andy. Okay, I know you went through to Z B A and they allowed you to access over a forty-two foot wide easement for two lots. We were aware of that, they came in front of us a long time ago, okay? My concern, my concern now is the same as it was back then is I believe this, this subdivision is, is going to need two common driveways to access from Hope Ave into both lots. It's going to be a common driveway. And that's my feeling, that's what you need, we're not going to get away with this eighty-one L to, to plans, two houses that existed, that type of thing, so I just wanted to let you know that. And talk to the applicant about coming up with those documents for common driveways.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, we've, we have to guarantee access and you're going to need, you're going to need to show a common driveway access.
Probably going to need some topo, you know, the proposed driveway. How the utilities are going to get in, that sort of thing. And you, if, I assume they're going to require waivers for this? Probably going to need a list of waivers.
So this, this subdivision requirement is a little convoluted in the fact that the planning board needs to be in agreement with the, and I'm not an attorney on how this gets worded. The planning board needs to be in agreement that the, with, with respect to the frontage, not necessarily a, a waiver subdivision that we normally think of where we're creating frontage through the construction of a road. If that makes sense?
Yeah, no, again, they came before us before they even had these easements. They, and talked about this subdivision, okay? I do know you went through to Z B A and they allowed you to use a forty-two foot wide easement to access two lots, okay? We have the paperwork. That's been, that's been decided, I'm not sure we're through the twenty-day appeal period, are we?
Um.
Probably not.
For
The Z B A action.
Oh, yes, that was, that was some time ago.
Was it?
Yes.
Rich, I have a question for Andy, Andy, are you going to have, is each lot going to have its own driveway? Because you do have a forty-two foot easement. So you could have a driveways. Is that what?
Correct, that was a per, that was a purpose behind the forty-two foot, so we didn't want to make it fifty feet and have the board think we were trying to create a right of way, i.e. a road. Because you can see the area is quite substantial. But make it wide enough so each, each lot could have its own individual, has enough real estate, if you will, to put in a driveway and utilities through the easement and not be conditioned on having a common driveway.
Okay, so there's no common driveway? They're going to each have their own?
Driveways are going to be within ten fifteen feet of each other, okay? That, that, that kind of deviates from our bylaws that say you can't even make pork chop lots with two fifty-foot frontages next to each other. Okay? And what you're proposing is basically the same thing as that, even if it was fifty feet, forty feet, whatever. Okay?
But we're, we're not
Going to have two driveways right next to one another. You're going to have this thing about which house, which driveway goes to which lot, type thing. It was common, it goes to both, doesn't matter.
If you have forty-two feet, how wide's your driveway, ten feet?
Yeah.
You'd have twenty feet between the driveways, right?
Yep.
I'm just, I'm just asking a question, so, you know, there'd be some circuits. I guess what we're trying to do, well, when you come here, you know, you know, you did what we asked you to do, you went to, you went to the Z B A and you got relief you needed as far as the frontage goes, so that's fine.
Norman, don't forget the forty-two feet basically came back from the Mass Electric, they wouldn't give them any.
But like he's saying, he's going to have a driveway for each house with about twenty feet in between. So.
So, just a question, if, if we're supposed to just say, okay, you're all set, Z B A gave you approval, why are you here?
Because it's a subdivision.
Right, and we are
A N R.
We're supposed to be able to show access to the lot. Right? We have no, we have no idea what's in between Hope Ave and these lots.
We know what's there, that's what they got
It's an easement.
I see, I, I understand, I understand it's an easement. But I think they're here for a subdivision so we can, I don't know, so we can guarantee access to the lots, right? I don't, if not, why are they, if not, why are they here?
Right, to me, you need to show what a driveway is, and like you said, access for the utilities. So just add that to the plan, Andy, so we approve something. We know we're approving, we're not approving a common driveway or, or whatever.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
I, I do.
We've got to submit it to, we've got to submit it to the fire department, I don't know if ten feet is wide enough. Doesn't have a turnaround. Okay? My idea about the common driveway was the stub coming off there that was, you know, eighteen feet wide and it would have a have a round cul-de-sac and two driveways go off that cul-de-sac. That, that was my thought about this way back when even, so. I mean, as a board, we can come to some consensus.
What we do is this, if it's a subdivision, we need all that information, you need to show the driveways, you need to show where the utilities are going in for each lot. We get a plan and we pass it to all the different departments, including the fire department. And then they give us their input and then based on that, we approve or make changes to the plan.
What you're saying is the plan is incomplete right now.
Right, I would like to see you show the, because you bring up a good point. If you, if you've got a common driveway, there's a whole one set of conditions that we put in for that. Like you say, turnaround and all this other stuff. If you're going to go individual lots, that's a whole different scenario, you're not going to need maintenance agreements and all that other stuff, so it's important that you put that on the plan. So as I say, we can give it to other departments, they can look at it, say we're all, I mean, it shouldn't be a problem, I don't see a a big issue, but I think you need to put that on the plan, Andy, so we know exactly what we're approving. If this was an A N R plan, whole different ballgame. We're just approving lots and then when we get the plan for each individual lot, you need to show all this stuff. But you're asking for a subdivision. And I think that's the difference, that's all. So you need, I can go back and add that stuff and then you know.
Rest of it? I just accept the plan as it is and come back in two weeks with a modified plan.
Well, we have to schedule a public hearing, has to be advertised in the newspaper, so I was thinking it can't go on the agenda till the second meeting in September anyway. Which does allow time for it to be distributed to different departments and receive comments. I think, Andy, you should probably reach out, excuse me, to the fire department and see what they're looking for. Because they do like to have a turnaround area, so maybe each of the proposed driveways could have a turnaround area. We haven't done that many subdivisions since I've been here for the last twelve years, so I don't know exactly what else should be shown on the plan. If the proposed
If, if these are treated as individual lots and they have individual driveways, you don't make other lots in town have fire turnarounds.
She's talking about a common driveway.
No, no, I'm talking about
You show that to the fire department right now, they're going to know, not know what's the access. They got an easement, but what's the access?
When, when we have stormwater management Yeah. We get the fire department involved with grade and access.
The plan used to be, in my opinion, Andy, was for an A N R plan, but, but you're looking for a a subdivision, which is a different set of requirements that we need.
But the, the only reason we're here for a subdivision is because of the variance. It's, it's not because we're constructing a road.
Yeah, these, these are A N R lots, but the way the system is set up, from what I understand, you have to apply
You needed a variance for the, you needed a variance for the frontage, yeah, your lots show a hundred and fifty foot of frontage, but they're not on the road. Okay?
Correct.
The frontage ended up being reduced to forty-two feet between two lots. Twenty-one feet per lot. That's what Z B A gave you. They allowed you to do that, okay? Now, from a planning board at viewpoint, to break up those four lots, we need assurances that every one of those owners will have adequate access to their lot. And the fire department's going to want to know, how do we get to this lot? We send this plan to them as it exists right now, they have no clue. That's why I don't even know why we should go in and submit it to anybody yet, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking. Okay, because if, if Mary sends it to the fire department, they're going to ask what's going on here.
I agree. It's a subdivision, the town has, has subdivision regulations and you need to go through them, I mean, a lot of them, they're not going to be pertinent. So you request waivers on those. And then we send it out to the different people that we usually send it out to and it's probably not going to be a big deal, but you still have to jump through the hoops.
You're going to want to probably get a waiver on sidewalks and stuff like that. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I think we're we're missing the, the point here a little bit. And maybe Mary has a statute there, I, I don't have it in front of me, but it's under the A N R process. When you have a reduced frontage variance, you have to get approval from the planning board, the only mechanism to do that is through a definitive subdivision.
Correct, oh.
Right, so we're, we're not because I'd be asking for waivers for basically entire subdivision control bylaw because we're not creating a road, that's the purpose of the subdivision control bylaw. That's where you get the construction standards, that's where you get the design standards. Photography, access, truck turnarounds, et cetera.
Now, I, I, again, I, I'm a little confused because maybe if you show A N R lots and you show the driveway is, that's it. We don't need a turnaround for a single family driveway.
I don't, I don't, I don't need to show a driveway for an A N R lot either, Mr. Chair.
But this is, well.
You applied for a definitive subdivision plan.
It is very confusing.
Yes, it is.
So the information that I had researched was that step one was to get a variance, or in this case, four variances from Z B A for the lack of frontage. So Z B A granted them zero frontage variances. Second step is to go to planning board with a
Definitive subdivision.
Subdivision plan.
This is not an A N R. Don't treat it like an A N R.
Requesting a waiver of the frontage. So those were basically, that was the information that I had researched, so.
I gotta be, I was quite surprised that this came in as a, so I thought the simple way to do it, they're looking for a waiver because they don't have enough funds. They went to the Z B A, they got their waiver. Now, we, we can waive that, approve it as A N R lots. And when they come to do each house, they'll show the location of the driveways and all that other stuff when they submit the plan to each house. That's the way I was looking. Because again, these kind of extenuating circumstances, I understand what, you know, if they came in with a common driveway, then we'd have to deal with it at that point. But, I mean, that's typically the way we do it, this, I've been, Rich, you've been on the board longer than me, but I've been, I've never seen a situation like this before, so, you know.
Well, they're creating, they're creating four lots out of one lot now, right? They are subdividing.
On an existing
They came in front of us and basically said that could we allow the hundred fifty foot of frontage on Hope Ave even though there's an easement running across the front of their property? And we said, no. That, that is not on, that isn't a budding to that, so then they went to Mass Electric. And at that time, I think we asked them for at least fifty feet. Because that's typical because that's typical width of one of our stubs going into a subdivision, right? 50 feet access. They came back and said, no, Mass Electric would only allow 42 feet. Okay, to me, it doesn't matter. Okay, the eight feet less, that's fine. But Norman, I wasn't looking at individual driveways feeding Hope Ave. I was looking at, this is a subdivision that needs a common driveway for two lots that the two driveways would come off the common driveway. Because someone's got to maintain that easement, basically.
I think we deal with it when we get each individual lot and say, how are you going to get to it?
No, we can't, we can't approve it because we don't show access. There's no access being shown. There's just an easement being shown.
Typically, when we do A&R lots, they don't show access, right? They just show.
He's on A&R. He's on A&R because they don't, if they abutted Hope Ave. Yeah, I agree with you.
Right, there was an, I'm having.
If there was some land on the other side and then it but Hope Ave and there was a 42-foot easement between those two lots. Okay, I could see your point, the two driveways got to go through that easement. But the only, the only frontage they have is that 42 feet to satisfy two lots.
Well, do whatever you want to do. Again, I look at it that way. I think we deal with the driveways, we treat this as an A&R plan. We deal with the driveways when they submit each individual lot. If they want to submit it as a common driveway, then we go through the common driveway regulations. If they want to submit it, the plan towards an individual driveway, then we pass it through all of the departments and we deal with it at that point. I'm looking at, to me, and again, I'm not, this is my opinion. I'm looking at this, now that they got the waiver for the 50 feet, I'm looking at these as A&R lots and then the access and all that will be approved when we do each house lot. I'm not looking at this as a subdivision.
And I'm looking at it as the fact they share this easement. If they were even individual, I could almost go by what you're saying. There'd be a driveway going through that easement. Who's to say, who's to say Lot 1 won't put their driveway on the left side of that?
What if, what if he put?
You know what I mean, Norman? There's nothing to say that. There's nothing there.
Put on the plan then, each place gets 21 feet of access. Take the 42 feet, divide it to 21. So Lot 3 gets 21 feet, Lot 4 gets 21 feet. That takes care of that. Now we don't have to worry about a common driveway.
But can I just ask, this is, but coming, they're coming forth to us from the application for approval of definitive subdivision plan. So to me, that's what it's coming to, what was, why subdivision?
In my opinion, I think that's overkill. I don't think we need to do that. I think we should treat these as A&R lots. I understand what Rich is saying, so take the 42, divide it into 21 so they have, each one has a 21-foot access to the lot. And then when they come in, give us the plan for stormwater management and all that, to deal with it at that point. This is not a subdivision, in my opinion. The road is already there, it's an existing town road. The only reason we're here is because, and again, they were granted this because they did show a hardship with the ZBA that there is a right-of-way for the, with Mass Electric. All right, so they got their approval for that, the hardship was proven. Now we give them each 21 feet for a driveway. And then, as I say, when they come in and they do the each individual lot for stormwater management, then we look at the access and we pass that out to the fire department and all that. It's a very, it's an extenuating circumstance. And that's just the way I'm looking at it. And I can see Rich's concern, but maybe we can address that by, again, giving them each 21 feet.
Who could we go to to get an opinion on this, Mary? We don't have a plan yet, Norman. We can't hand it off to anybody yet.
Well, we got to do it. So I'm just giving you my view on it. If it makes sense, fine. If you guys want to do something else, that's what we can do. But I do see your concern. I think the way around that is I just think to make them go through a sub, do you realize the waivers we're going to have to give?
So I did, can, if I could.
Go ahead and give them anyway.
So I did do some research on this when they had gone to the ZBA, which was a while ago, so it's not all fresh in my head. But I believe there is case law on this that pretty much tells you exactly what to do. So like I said, in my recollection, step one was variance from ZBA. Step two was submit an A&R plan, sub-definitive plan to the planning board requesting a waiver of the frontage. And then it could be approved. That, that was the research that I found. Like I said, I know there is some case law. If I can do a little more research on the case law.
You want to send this plan to town council? Send the plan to town council. I don't care. I'm looking for an official thing that guarantees the access to those lots. That's all I'm. If it can be done with just driveways, okay, I'll bow.
Mary, you just said A&R, okay? Did you mean A&R or did you mean subdivision? You just said A&R.
I did, I did A&R in quotes, sorry.
Men's subdivision.
So I'm agreeing with what you're just saying.
Yes.
Agreeing with Rich saying show 21 feet of access and that's it. Basically, what you're showing is an A&R lot with a 21-foot frontage.
That's not what they got from the ZBA. Did they, what'd they get?
They got, they.
They got zero?
Zero. They were granted.
No frontage.
No frontage.
They didn't need access to their own plan, huh?
Well, we're going to correct that by saying it's 21 feet of frontage.
That's funny that they would give them zero, okay? That's landlocked land.
Well, it's going to be a helicopter.
Well, I guess they're, they were guarantee or thinking that they were going to get that 42-foot easement from
Well, that was in there.
Mass Electric.
Well, that's my thing. A&R lot, 21 feet of frontage on each lot, then we deal with each lot as a complaint.
Run that through town council.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Can I make one suggestion? The city of Worcester has done this procedurally a few times. If I can find an example and forward it to Mary as well, it might be helpful to the board.
Fine, any help we can use. Because in this day and age.
Procedurally, I understand what we're stumbling on because of the nomenclature we use typically. And I get confused on it myself. But I know in a few instances, they've done, the ZBA has granted waivers for frontage and then required that the planning board endorse a definitive subdivision plan even though it exists on an existing road. So very similar to this situation. I can, I can find hopefully the record plans and what got recorded for the approvals and forwarded to Mary and the board. And so, and you can see procedurally how they handle that. It might be helpful for this particular project.
Yeah, because we're treating it as a definitive subdivision plan, which we have to guarantee access, okay? Okay, and one way of doing that is a common driveway at a, what? 86 feet of length by 18 feet and then it would go into a bubble into both lots. And you'd have your driveways coming into that bubble, okay? That's what I'm looking at. That's what I think ensures access. And that they'll have to maintain their common driveway.
I'd be interested to see what they did in Worcester because like Rich said, we've never done this before, so. I mean, we want to do it right. We don't want to, you know, make the applicant break the bank, but we got to protect what we got to do. So if you could get us any information, I think that would be terrific.
Well, yep.
Okay, so.
Rich, are we still going to ask town council?
What do you think, Mary?
I think it would be good to have a definitive answer from town council. Seeing as we've never come across this before.
I think, I think there's a specific process you have to go through. That's why they're here before us. It might be very easy.
It might be, it might.
No, it might be, it might be a little bit of topo, here's the two driveways, you know, and I don't think we should get all worked up about if you have to apply and you have to type a page and a half of waivers. I don't really think that's that big of a deal.
You got to use common sense sometimes, but.
Right. If I was at the office, I would have more paperwork on this, but I'm not in the office, so.
Well, like you said, we got a month before we're going to hold a public hearing. We can go ahead and accept the submission and schedule a public hearing. And in the meantime, do all this this research.
Yes.
My goal is to guarantee access to both lots. That's what subdivision is all about.
Well, I think we're all on the same page on that, Rich.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if driveways is a way to do it. I don't know.
Good question. We're all going to learn something.
Yeah, because I mean, we changed that bylaw so there wouldn't be two pork chop lots right next to each other. We put normal, regular lots in between and pork chop lots because there's a numbering issue in the town of Oxford. So you're going to have, let's say, you're going to have house number 14 and 15, 14 and 16 right there separated by 20 feet. Yeah.
All right, well, let's do the research and I'm going to make a motion that we accept the plan and that.
Our submission.
Huh? Accept the submission.
Submission.
We accept the submission and make a motion and that we schedule a public hearing for when, Mary?
September 28 at 7:05 PM.
September 28 at 7:05 PM. And that will give us time to do research. Andy, you can send some information in. Mary can do her thing.
Yep.
We'll get this thing hopefully wrapped up then.
I'll second that. Okay, seconded by Dale.
Yeah.
For the discussion.
I mean, does that make sense, Rich?
Norman, you know.
No.
I'll learn something too, okay? My way is to err upon the fact that two people are going to, two people are going to be accessing out that 42-foot. Easement, okay?
We need some guidance.
Two ways of doing it. Get them too close together, one will plow snow into the other ones, okay? That type of thing, you know?
All right.
Anyway, I'll vote yes. Craig?
Yes.
Christine? Yes. Norman?
Christine's muted.
Yes. And Dale?
Yes.
Yes. Carrie Dunanas?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I got the way, I know.
We got you.
We got you.
Okay.
Okay.
My dog was barking.
Okay. Okay, anyone have anything?
Iran Chris?
No, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Norman seconded. All those voting in favor, I say, yeah.
Aye.
One at a time.
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Norman says aye.
Christine says aye. She made the motion and Dale said aye, okay?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Have a good night, everybody. Stay safe.